If I could have your attention, please. I would like to introduce to you Mr. Jeff Dawes from the Stockbridge Community Church, and I would ask that he come to the podium and lead us, have the invocation for us, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the privilege of being able to call you our Father. And God, we thank you in gatherings like this that we can call on your name, and we thank you for all the people here that are public servants, that they've given of their time to serve our community. And we ask you, God, that you would give them special favor and wisdom to help us in our community, help it to be a better place. And God, I pray for the people here tonight that have things that they want to discuss. I pray that, Lord, that you would just be with them as well, and that your Spirit would be among us, and it would be one of peace, and it would be one Lord of love, and it would be one of oneness, and I ask you for that blessing. Father, I pray that throughout the evening that we would look to you and remember that we are all in this together. Thank you so much again for these great servants that come to serve our community, and thank you for these wonderful people that live in our community. And God, we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you would, remain standing to the pledge of the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm showing 6:30 with the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM Tuesday, June the 16th, 2015, meeting come to order. I would like to entertain to the board that the agenda has been changed somewhat. We have three items that had been removed. Item number 11A has been removed. Board of Education, we're removing a resolution providing a levy for collection of annuals. And then, we're going to remove 14A. We're removing Public Works, the resolution requesting a road name change from Loop Road. We're removing that. And then, we also going to remove... 18, Legal Department Resolution Question Approval of Exchange of Certain Property, Locust Grove. Having said that, I would ask that somebody move to approve the agenda as just amended.
Motion approved.
Have a motion District 3?
Next.
Second District 1, any further discussion? If I raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we're going to have a presentation, Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center, and we're going to have Mr. Lou Martin come forward. We're also going to have Mrs. Melissa to read an introduction.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, we have, we welcome officials from the Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center Foundation Incorporated who are here to express their appreciation for your vision and generosity in supporting the Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center Foundation and its officials in their quest to build and operate a world-class aquatic center for the community to be located here in Henry County. At a recent Henry County Commission meeting held on May 5th, 2015, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approved an intergovernmental agreement with the Henry County Development Authority to lease to them a 20.3 acre parcel of land located on Henry Parkway in McDonough. The Development Authority will in turn sublease the parcel of land to the Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center Foundation Incorporated, providing them with the land to build an aquatic center in Henry County. And we have Lou Martin here who has a few words he'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. The Kinsley Grace Foundation and its supporters and the citizens of Henry County would like to express our deepest gratitude for your support of the Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center. The county's generous accommodation to our need for a location to construct a world-class aquatic center is greatly appreciated. Not only will this facility serve as a homage to Kinsley Grace Kirby, a wonderful child whose life was tragically cut short, it will serve the needs of the entire population from the youngest to the oldest citizens in Henry County. Imagine the lives that will be touched by competitive swimming, aerobics, life-saving, drown-proofing, and healing therapy, just for starters. The Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center will improve the quality of life in Henry County for its residents as well as surrounding neighbors. This facility will draw people from around the country and the world for competitive swimming events. It's not just our story, it's our community's story. We look forward to the day that Kinsley Grace Sister Alavina Kirby swims through a ribbon as we open the pool in dedicated Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center. The project would not be possible without your support and contribution in securing the location for Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center. Thank you, Board of Directors, Kinsley Grace Foundation.
Thank you. Want to get a picture?
Mm-hmm.
Public comment, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting, and all persons wish to speak. For public comments must sign in with a countercrack prior to beginning of the meeting, you must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You would be able to address the board for five minutes. I have three. First one will be Ms. Joyce Hinton. If you would, come to the podium, state your name, and you'll have five minutes, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joyce Hinton, 904 Flatshows Church Road. And I am here today to address the behavior of a Commissioner who felt compelled to attack and attempt to humiliate a taxpaying citizen simply because that citizen exercised their right to question a possible conflict of interest that referenced a choice that was made by this Commissioner for county board appointment. The tactics used against this citizen by the Commissioners were one to intimidate and threaten the citizen. These are the tactics one might find used in a closed form of government that is controlled by elitists. So one might ask the following rhetorical questions. Who do the Commissioners represent? Is it the citizens who elect them and pay their salaries? Or is it some other class of political hierarchy? Would you be confrontational with your boss or customer? More importantly, one needs to ponder these questions and observations. How did this Commissioner obtain a letter that was addressed to the citizen, and why? What gave that Commissioner the right to make a copy or open a letter addressed to someone other than himself? The letter should have been sent to the citizen at their home address. It is not hard to find a person's home address. This whole situation reeks of improprieties. My advice to the Commissioners is to listen to the citizens' concerns, tell them thank you for their time and concerns, and inform them you would be glad to look into the issue and get back with them in a timely manner. Then do follow-up with a scheduled private meeting or phone call with the citizens to discuss their concern. Why try to publicly embarrass and threaten them in a public forum? This serves no one and reflects negatively on the image of this county. So who really came out looking bad in this situation? I can tell you, it was not the badgered citizen. Many citizens are incensed about the behavior displayed by the Commissioner toward a taxpaying citizen. Perhaps the Commissioner should consider taking a class on the proper way to handle a citizen's complaint or concern. Thus, I conclude by leaving you with the following quote from Joanie Cornell, PhD in Psychology, and CEO of Flexible Work Solutions. Only through becoming aware of yourself and your limitations can you be transparent with others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Tyrone Williams.
Good evening. Uh, Canora Turner is also on your list right there. He's not speaking totally on the same subject, but I would like for him to come up to the podium and kind of start off first, if that would be okay.
Y'all going to use the same five minutes? Is that what you want?
No, different, different five minutes.
Huh? Just five minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got you.
No, it's different five minutes. He's going to use his, and then I'll speak.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, evening. Canora Turner, 406 Buckboard Lane, Locust Grove, Georgia. I just first want to say thank you guys for the service that you all do. I hadn't been here in probably about a year or so. Last time I was here with Mr. Williams, we were fighting for relevancy. We operate a 501(c)(3) nonprofit Georgia League Sports Academy that's a youth development organization. So I just wanted to come and share some good news with you all and go from there. Just want to let you know since we incorporated back in 2013, now at the end of 2013, we've been able to do a lot of great things here in this community and brand this community in a positive light. We're one of the fastest-growing nonprofit youth development organizations in the area. We helped orchestrate the largest Atlanta Falcons heads-up football camp that was free for the community that was held over at Henry County High School, had those guys come out, put on a camp for local children and parents. We took over 300 some odd families to Atlanta Falcons Training Camp last year, which is becoming an annual trip for us, something the kids really enjoy to do. Also, we're heading into our second year of hosting an annual free health clinic that we bring practitioners out, and they do everything from dentistry to family practice and orthopedics. This year is going to be held over at the Jason T. Harper Center, because we've outgrown the inside of the Heritage Park building, so that'll be free for the community, something we're going to add this year as well. We also have our summer reading program that we did last year, had about 15-plus individuals that graduated from that program. We adopted the state initiative for reading for school age children, just making sure that they're keeping up with the grades and not losing that itch to want to learn and gain knowledge. Also, we had a financial literacy course for those students as well, as well as parents. All this was totally free for the community. We also became a top-tier sponsor with community schools, working with them this year with the Parent Expo, just want to be able to provide some school supplies, things like that. We had an awesome opportunity to represent Henry County, the state of Georgia, and the Atlanta Falcons at the NFL Draft this past year. We took about 20 families up there, and our kids participated actually in the NFL Draft. And also, they had the plan, had opportunity to play in the first-ever NFL Flag Football Festival, which was a one-day tournament, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so it was a great thing. We have a great relationship with the Arthur Blank Foundation and Atlanta Falcons, so they made sure that we were well taken care of and that we represented them well in this county and the state well. We also hosted an Easter basket giveaway, where we donated over 50 baskets to a local charity for Easter. We did some for the Haven House and a couple other local charities here in the area. Also adopted another 20 some odd families for Thanksgiving and Christmas, just trying to do our part to help make Henry County and the community in which we serve a much, much better place, along with donating over 600 pounds of canned goods to helping in his name Food Ministry. Also received national and local press with the things that we're doing to increase child activity when it comes to exercise and things of that nature through our NFL Flag Program, which is actually a program sponsored by the NFL. And also, one thing that we're very proud of, we introduced our 529 program to all of our participants. Right now, we've, we're up 1,000% as it relates to participants and families, so we felt the need to introduce the 529 program, which is basically our initiative to make sure that all of our kids 100% go to college, one way or another. So just wanted to come and deliver some good news. I know sometimes when these public comments come up, it's normally not so good, but like I said, I just want to deliver some good news, and I'll let Mr. Williams take over from there.
All right. Well, that's the good news. Here's the other side of the coin. The organization in which we was on the board with, that we came here and talked a little bit about the last time we was here, has continued to dishonor the county. And I spoke, we spoke at the REC Board Advisory Meeting this morning. I asked for that particular organization, Locust Grove Youth Football Association, to be denied the opportunity to have a lease for any parks and rec field, or any county field in this county, of course. Reason being that I asked for that, I delivered some documents to you all up there. The first one is the Henry County REC Board meeting of October 15, 2013. And on the second page of that, the third column down, they was found back at that point in 2011, before we came onto the board of subleasing the fields down there.
Mr. Turner's time has expired, if you would, since you already signed up for this. State your name, and you've got five minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Tyrone Williams, 712 Yule Drive, McDonough, Georgia. And thank you all for hearing us out again. It's good, good to see you all looking all good and healthy up there today. But as I was saying, on that second page, the third column down, it talks a little bit about the young lady rented the field, that association subleased the fields in 2011. That was before we got, became a member of that Board of Directors down there. And the reason I'm sharing this with you all, and I'm going through what I'm going through here, is to kind of give you an idea why we are, as a citizen, requesting that these guys no longer have a lease on the county, in the county. So they subleased the fields, took the money, don't know what happens to the money. Tim received some complaints about that situation, Tim Coley, the director, since, received some complaints about that back at that point. We became part of the board in 2012, and in 2012, we did a whistleblower because they was not really keeping up with the fiduciary responsibility of a 501(c)(3), and so we brung that, we brung that to the attention of the REC Advisory Board at the time. Mr. Tommy Mitchell, the email that you see that's in highlighted yellow would be in this page here, did come back and say they was not following the minimum standards of a 501(c)(3) at that time, and they was going to look at disbanding that organization, which never happened. As we move forward, we have a letter here, and it looks like this, and I'm going in particular order. That letter, and this letter here speaks of how they had been treating people when we was on that board of color. That the then-president stated that to a Caucasian coach to take that garbage back to North Henry, where they came from, he was speaking of the kids and the parents that that coach was coaching. In this letter that the coach signed at that time, he asked him, "Are you speaking of that because they are African-American kids and families?" He stated, "Doesn't matter what, doesn't matter what you think, just take that garbage back up to North Henry." Also, as we was on the board, we had several comments that was made. The back of that particular letter is my resignation at that particular point back in October 30th of 2013, because of the fiduciary responsibility not being met, the racial-type atmosphere, the good old boy-type atmosphere that was taking place, and nothing was being done about that association at that point. We move on to today, because they have changed some of the members on that particular board, but it continues on because most of those members are still, some of those members are still there, and so it's still carrying on. You have a Locust Grove Police Department report where somebody came in, we leased those fields in the springtime, and somebody came into the concession stand with a key, and they're the only organization outside the county that has a key, and they sabotaged our drinks in the drink machine. A week after that, they showed up in a mob-like atmosphere and tried to intimidate and harass us as a group of people down there, and our kids and our parents was there, scared them to death. We had to call the police to actually have them removed. So I request that you all, don't be wrapped up with these guys any longer. Take them out.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a request made by Mr. Bill Tony regarding correspondence from Representative Yates. You've got 15 minutes. State your name, please.
Bill Tony, 1652 Howey 155 North, McDonough, Georgia. I'd like to ask Leland Maddox and Milton McGarrett to come up, please.
I'm here this evening to address comments made by District 2 Commissioner Brian Preston during the last meeting on June the 2nd. At that meeting, Mr. Preston accused me of lying about personally meeting with Representative John Yates regarding my concerns about Senator Rick Jeffries serving on the Henry County Water Authority Board. Mr. Preston handed me a personal letter that was addressed to me from Mr. Yates. The letter was dated May the 11th. Mr. Preston admitted that he had been holding the letter for three weeks, claiming that he had not seen me to give it to me. Everyone knows that I give out my address, my name, every time I appear before this board. Even if Mr. Preston hadn't seen me, he could have mailed it to me. I checked with the federal crime, I checked, as a federal crime to obstruct or interfere with the delivery of any person's mail. That's federal statute 18 U.S.C. 1702. So the letter and envelope was opened, and it was clear that Mr. Preston had made a copy of the letter, even though the letter does not indicate that Mr. Yates intended for Mr. Preston to have a copy of it. Although the letter took me by surprise, I told y'all that I would be back with proof that I did meet with Mr. Yates. I told y'all that I went to Representative Yates' office with four other gentlemen, and we discussed Senator Jeffries serving on the Water Authority Board. I've got three of the gentlemen here. The fourth one is running a little late on us. After meeting, after the meeting, I contacted Representative Yates, longtime Secretary Delane Roberts, and reminded her who I was when we all met at the Capitol. She remembered everything about it. I also spoke to Mr. Yates, and I met with Representative Yates. It is only my second time ever meeting with him. Mr. Yates signed a new letter correcting the letter that Mr. Preston had. I would like to show you the letter now.
I'd like for, if I can approach, I'd like for Mr. Preston.
Letter of May 11th regarding Mr. Bill Tony. I have recently had my memory refreshed after speaking with my staff, who reminded me that I did meet with Mr. Tony and four other individuals from Henry County during his past legislative session. This meeting took place in my office at the state Capitol. During this meeting, I was asked a question whether it was proper for Senator Rick Jeffries to serve on the Henry County Water Authority Board. Representative Yates called an attorney from their Legislative Council office for advice. Legislative Council did provide his thoughts on the matter. I hope this letter clears up any confusion. I meet with many people in my office, and when Senator Jeffries contacted me about Bill Tony, I didn't recall who he was, as I have never met Mr. Tony before. Now I recall meeting Mr. Tony in my office. Sincerely, John Yates.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'll have... I have affidavits from three of the gentlemen. The fourth one, like I said, he's running late, so I hope this clarifies everything that you had. Now, I did not give out the Legislative Council's name, who gave his opinion at the last meeting. Commissioner Preston stated that discipline would be imposed. I'm not going to help Mr. Preston go after an attorney who's just doing his job by giving his professional legal opinion. We know how that works out. My motives, at the June 2nd meeting, Commissioner Preston questioned my motives. He stated that I didn't live in his district, and asked, "Why did I care about who he appointed to the Water Authority Board?" First of all, a citizen of this county, I have the First Amendment right to come before and speak to you about public concern. It is my constitutional right to do the same. Second, we have one county, not six. Just because you're a district commissioner does not mean that you, that your public actions can't be questioned. Your actions as a district commissioner can and do affect the entire county. Third, the Water Authority is a countywide utility department. Every property owner in this county pays two mils of tax to fund the Water Authority. I own property throughout the county, rental properties throughout the county. I pay two mils of tax for the Water Authority on every single piece of property that I own. Commissioner Preston, I have every reason to care about who serves on the Water Authority Board, and I have a constitutional right to state my concerns in a public setting. At the June 2nd meeting, Commissioner Preston questioned my integrity by saying that I had a conflict of interest because I previously ran for political office and might possibly run for political office in the future. He even went as far as to bring up my family members, all in an attempt to try to discredit me. I have two words for Mr. Preston. Aqua Genesis. I would like to show the certificate. I would like to show the certificate of Aqua Genesis. I would like to show the certificate of Aqua Genesis. Call it Aqua Genesis. The company was created in 2007. Rick Jeffries is the CEO, and Brian Preston is CFO, Secretary of this for-profit corporation. Commissioner Preston is business partners with Rick Jeffries. To my knowledge, Mr. Preston has never disclosed this business relationship at any time he was appointing Senator Jeffries to the Water Authority. I think this board should decide if ethics charges should be brought against Mr. Preston under the county ethics ordinance. Aqua Genesis was administratively dissolved in 2011. It is my understanding that this only means that the annual registration fee has not been paid. If the fees are paid up, then Aqua Genesis can be back up and running in no time. Now, before Mr. Preston became County Commissioner in 2012, he was a member of the Board of Education. In fact, he served as chairman. Since Aqua Genesis was up and running in 2007 through 2011, Mr. Preston was required to disclose his business interests to the State Ethics Commission. According to Mr. Preston, 2010 financial disclosure statement, which was filed April 11th, 2011, Aqua Genesis was never disclosed by Mr. Preston, who was on the school board at that time. I would like to show pages from this document that can be found online. By the way, Rick Jeffries in 2009, disclosure does mention Aqua Genesis. From where I stand, Mr. Preston may have violated not only the county ethics ordinance, but also the state ethics rule as well. In conclusion, I have before, I've come before this board as a citizen of this county. I have constitutional right to speak on these matters of public concern. As a citizen, I should not have my motives or integrity questioned simply because you don't like what I have to say. When citizens are bullied and attacked by public officials simply because we exercise our First Amendment rights, it's time to get new public officials. I have, all I have ever asked for y'all to do is do the right thing. Be open, honest, and transparent. Thank you very much.
You want to make a comment, or you want to dialogue?
No, it's not a dialogue. I just want to explain what Aqua Genesis is.
And you can have a comment. That work for you? Chair recognizes District Two.
I want to explain Aqua Genesis is, here's the thing. I've, I'm an entrepreneur. I've started businesses. I've had businesses that have done very well. I've had businesses that didn't work out. I mean, that's the risk you run, that's the great American dream of being a serial entrepreneur. Aqua Genesis was a concept. If you go and check with the federal government, you'll see there was never, has never, been a tax return filed for that business concept. There's not any expenses involved with that company. It was an idea that was presented to me. I come from a background in public accounting. Every business, if I could give any advice to parents who are trying to figure out, you know, what to get their kids to go into when they're in college, if you want a good general business degree, go get an accounting degree. Because every business in America has to file tax returns, has to do a balance sheet, has to do an income statement, so that gives you a unique set of skill sets. That people will come to you with concepts and say, "I'll tell you what. Why don't you be the brains of the bookkeeping? Because we don't want to pay for an accountant. You have a background in public accounting. We'll do all the knowledge work." That's exactly what happened with Aqua Genesis. I was to be the accountant for this business, but the concept just wasn't viable. If you remember back in 2006 and '07, we had all the droughts that were going on, they were talking about pumping up water from the ocean to provide water for communities. So it came to the idea that, why couldn't we go to municipalities, dig for deep wells, and try to provide water sources? Well, of course, Rick Jeffries, Senator Rick Jeffries, is an expert in water. I think it's a very good skill set to have somebody who's an expert in water on the Water Authority, but this was not a viable business. It was never, like I said, no revenue was generated. When you use the word "for profit," you have to have revenue to generate profit. It was a business concept that never came out of the ground. All that was done was a Secretary of State filing was incurred, but no tax returns were ever filed, no revenue was ever generated, no expenses were generated with this. It was a business concept. Now, if I've gone astray of something by having concepts, if you go out there, there's another company called Advisor Skills. Was incorporated, did have profit, didn't work out. I couldn't make enough money, so I shelved it. I filed tax returns, I closed it down, but I've had very successful businesses with Preston and Cleveland Wealth Management, and Preston Financial, and that's why I have clients in 27 states. I manage hundreds of millions of dollars, and it's not, I don't think it's a bad thing for citizens to come from Henry County, by the way. I went kindergarten through graduation right here in Henry County. I graduated from Henry County High School. I've started businesses, I've employed people, I pay well into the six figures in income taxes, and I do it because I love this county, I love starting companies, I enjoy employing people. I just had one of my employees have a baby, I just had another employee get engaged, have employees there buying houses and cars. God bless America that I can be an entrepreneur. And to use the concept that I had a, you know, an idea that didn't turn out to be a viable business, and then say I'm unethical, it's a little inappropriate. You know, I will tell you, Mr. Tony, it sounds like there was just a misunderstanding. You know, Representative Yates drafted that letter, he never defunct that letter. He just, it sounded like it was a misunderstanding. He didn't recall it, you clarified the record. I appreciate you clarifying that record, and that's why I read the letter gladly out loud. That was never my idea, it was the gotcha with the part. If that's, I just was reading, that was not my declaration. It was Representative Yates', and it sounds like you clarified it. So I appreciate your time, and I'm going to take Ms. Hinton's advice and just thank you for coming before us, because I do think the First Amendment is an incredible right that we have, and I think it's a great country that we live in. And I appreciate you guys. I just wanted to clarify, so nobody thought I was doing anything unethical, because my mother watches these shows, you know, I have family watching this, and, you know, I've always tried to follow the rules, because you don't mess with the people that have the guns. That's the IRS, that's the federal government. You don't mess with those people, you follow the rules. So, thank you for your time.
Next, we have consent agenda. The following items shall be considered on the consent agenda before voting. Any consent agenda items, the chairman will provide opportunity to add or delete any items. Reading the three, I'm going to make a comment here before we resolve this. Resolution to retire a dog from service. Understand we're going to have some comments after that with a picture. And then, on the resolution authorizing the presentation of service weapons to certified law enforcement, that resolution has been amended to take the Sheriff's Department out of it. The, it was an oversight on our part. The Sheriff's Department is a constitutional officer, and he can do basically what he likes to do. So, having said that, we have a resolution to retire Belgian Malinois dog from service with the Henry County Police Department. Second one, we have a resolution authorizing the presentation of service award to certified law enforcement and fire helmets to certified fire personnel upon retirement. Then we have a resolution rescinding, Resolution 15-168 for the purchase of personal camcorder. If somebody moved, we move in that direction.
So moved.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second, District Four. Any further discussion, on the favor, raise your right hand. So I yield the floor. Anybody like to be speaker at this time? I yield the floor to District Four.
Chairman, I'd like to speak, if I could, real quick. About a year ago, we retired one of Henry County's Canines, and we did it on consent agenda, and it came and went, and without any fanfare, and it just didn't sit real well with me. And I understand it's just a, it's just a dog, but there is a human element to this, and I don't want to overlook that human element. And the human element is really the handler of the dog. The handler and the dog bond, they spend every waking moment together. When they're at work, they're together, when they're at home, they're together. It becomes a bond much like we would have in the military with our military members that we served with. They're there for each other, and it hurts the handlers when they lose their animal. So actually, I'm going to ask Officer Torbush, if you could come forward, please, to the Officer Torbush, what's the name of your canine?
Pippo.
How long have you guys been together?
Over two years.
And what's the largest seizure, drug seizure, that Pippo's been part of?
With me, two kilos of methamphetamine.
Two kilos of meth, off the road, off the streets. And about how many people do you think Pippo's apprehended in his career?
I believe eight.
Eight? That's quite a bit. I have a letter of appreciation for you and your department I'd like to read to you, and then I'd like to get a picture with your unit. I believe they're all here, except for Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Dear Officers of the Henry County Police Department, Special Operations Division, Canine Unit, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Henry County Police Department Canine Unit for the outstanding job they do each and every day for the citizens of Henry County, and the words of appreciation are most fitting upon the occasion of the retirement of one of Henry County's four-legged canine officers. Pippo, the nine-year-old Belgian Malinois police canine, is officially retiring from service tonight after spending six years on the beat with Henry County Police Department. I would also like to express my gratitude to Pippo's handler, Officer Stephen Torbush, who has trained and cared for his canine partner over the last several years, and will continue to do so in Pippo's retirement. During his six years in service with Henry County, Pippo was directly responsible for the seizure of more than $5 million in narcotics and currency for Henry County Police Department, and was instrumental over his career in the apprehensions of hundreds of criminals, helping to take them off the street. The value of a quality canine unit often goes unnoticed, so I want to express my sincere appreciation to the Henry County Police Department, its leaders, and the Special Operations Division Canine Unit for their outstanding police work in keeping Henry County safe.
This ends the consent agenda portion. Next, we have a resolution requesting acceptance of a grant from the Office of Governor Criminal Justice Coordination Council for the fiscal year 2016. Resources Court presenters Honorable Arch McGarrett, Chief Superior Court Judge Honorable
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to be before you. Today, we are asking that you accept grant funds for Drug Court in the amount of $136,184, and for Mental Health Court in the amount of $76,396. The match for Drug Court is $15,132. The match for Mental Health Court is $8,488. And, we're asking that you accept these grant funds. Additionally, we're asking that you approve our withdrawal of $78,000 for the purposes of funding Drug Court for this upcoming fiscal year from the, again, it's a date fund request. Also, we're requesting that you approve a $16,370 draw from the date fund for the Mental Health Court. And finally, that you reduce the cap to $700,000 that you had previously imposed on the date fund in order to fund not only our requests for the date fund withdrawal for this year, but also the DOI Court's withdrawal for this year. And Judge Blunt, do you wish to be heard as to that matter as well?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for seeing us this evening. The State Court of Henry County has been granted a $23,600 grant from the State of Georgia Office of Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And for us to use that, those funds, you have to accept the grant and allow us to disperse the funds in the manner in which we have put in our recommendation in the resolution itself. I won't go into those figures because they're not that important. The second, the second issue that we have is, we're asking that you reduce the date fund cap, and the date fund, for those of you who don't know what that means, is drug abuse treatment and educational funds, which is collected through the courts and placed into a particular fund for the purpose of helping people with drug addiction and alcohol addiction. It is statutory in nature, it's required that the counties do that, and that is the money that's used. A lot of that money is used for these programs that we've been talking about here tonight. So, that's the request. We're asking that you reduce the cap, the minimum cap, from $800,000 to $700,000 this year, and allow the State Court of Henry County to draw down $64,000 of the date funds this coming up year. And it's broken down for you to read there. I know you gentlemen have all read it, and there's no reason for me to read it in public, but it breaks down... but it breaks down how we intend to use those funds if you'll approve this, and that's what we're asking to do.
And I just wanted to say that the Mental Health Court, the Drug Court, and the DUI Court, they protect the public, they reduce crime, they save the taxpayers' money, and they do a great bit of good. And I want to invite you to our graduations in the future in anticipation of your willingness to fund us in two thousand and sixteen. We would welcome any additional interest you have or any other questions that you might have. We are always looking for an opportunity to share the success of these courts for the county and for the citizens. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Now, let me have some comments. So what we're doing, we got, we got three resolutions in here. One, each one has to be approved separately.
Yes.
Okay, for each, one for the Resource Court, one for the Adult Family Drug Court, and one for the DUI Drug Court.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Now, having said that, I don't, I don't see the resolution where we would be reducing the eight hundred thousand down to seven hundred thousand. Is that?
It should be in there.
I believe it's contained within the, the resolution, sir.
Yeah, the second resolution that we have presented to the board covers the DUI Court and asks for the reduction down to seven hundred thousand dollars.
So that, that was in the second one or the first one?
No, sir, Mister Chairman. It's actually, it's two separate resolutions for each court. So Exhibits Four, Five, and Six would be requesting permission from you all to accept the grants, and then Exhibits Seven through Nine would be to reduce the cap on the date funds. So actually, it'll be Exhibits Four through Nine.
If we approve resolution Exhibit Four, Five, and Six individually, we have in fact legally reduced it from eight hundred to seven hundred thousand. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all for your time.
First thing we're gonna do, we're gonna approve a resolution in the book. Okay, we have a resolution that the Board of Commissioners accepting a grant of seventy-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars from the State of Georgia Office of Government Accountability Court Funding Committee from the Criminal Justice Coordination. We have a motion on the floor from District One.
Second.
Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. The next resolution would be a resolution of the Board of Commissioners accepting a grant for one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one eighty-four, State of Georgia Office of Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. If somebody consider moving in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. We got, we have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners accepting a grant in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred from the State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Somebody move in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion from District Three.
Second.
Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have a Juvenile Court Resolution Requesting Approval of an Agreement for Guardian at Latham Services for Fiscal Year 2016. Ms. Ann Miller. Greetings.
Good evening, Mister Chairman and Commissioners. I am Ann Miller and I am a Guardian at Latham and I do court-appointed work as child advocacy for Henry County. And I'm requesting that you approve the agreement for the budget year 2015 to 2016.
Anybody have any comments? We have a resolution in the book to approve an agreement with Henry Guardian at Latham, LLC for Guardian at Latham Services. The, uh, have a motion District Two. Second District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Resolution Requesting Reorganization of an Operational Personnel of the Henry County Emergency Communications Center, Don Ash.
Good evening, Mister Chairman and Commissioners. As you can see, we presented some information for you last year in excess of three hundred and eighty thousand calls the nine-one-one center processed. We're looking to do some reorganization and position assignments to better serve the community, better perform the services, as well as the training for our department. The funds we're looking to utilize are coming directly out of the nine-one-one funds, which will not impact our general budget, but it gives us an opportunity to advance the level of service we provide to our community and to our citizens.
So what we're doing, we're adding more people, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
We're adding more people?
We'll be adding some more people and we'll be classifying our staff in a different manner as well.
Anybody have any comments or question? This, this reorganization, reclassification does give, appears that most of the existing employees in that department have five percent increase.
It does give an increase to our employees. It also gives them additional responsibility in the area of training and supervision in our department as well. This is actually the first realignment we've done in twenty-five years to the department since I've been with the department.
Would this be above and beyond the major medical we pay in for them, which would be equivalent to two percent plus three percent raise increase that goes into effect for all employees, January, correction, July the first? So they would be getting the three percent plus another five percent?
The five percent will be added to, I guess it would be added to the cost of living that, that applies to all county employees. That is correct.
Anybody have any comments on this? I think, I would like to table this and study it since we just got through with the budget and I know this is coming out of nine-one-one money. And I, I, that's just me now. I would like to give it more thought. That's me.
I'd like to sit down and talk to Don if I could, just to get a little feedback from
I think the only concern I would have obviously is just giving all employees three percent and then call it, and these people deserve this, there's no doubt about that. But now, we've given them five, a group, five percent over beyond the three percent that we all get, and I just think we need to make sure we moving in, in a very steady relationship. And all of our employees, in my mind, obviously, we need a five percent, so that's my thoughts on it. I would vote to table it and study it myself.
Chairman, I'd like a motion that we table this item.
We have a motion, District Three, to table this item.
I'll second that.
Have a second, District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign, so move. Thank you, Ms. Dash. The next item had been removed. The next item, we have a public hearing to receive public comments on a proposed 2015 annual action plan as part of the FYI twenty-twelve, twenty-sixteen Consolidated Plan, request to approve the proposed 2015 annual action plan and authorize the middle of the plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Tiana, good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Members of the Board. Henry County receives community development block grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As a prerequisite of receiving funds under HUD's Formula Grant Program, specifically the CDBG program, Henry County is required to submit an annual action plan for fiscal year 2015, year four of the county's five-year consolidated plan for fiscal years 2012 through 2016. The county has been advised by HUD that it is eligible for receiving nine hundred, ninety-one thousand dollars, roughly nine hundred, ninety-one thousand dollars for fiscal year 2015. The fiscal year 2015 annual action plan describes specific projects in which the county proposes to utilize CDBG funds to carry out priorities established in the county's fiscal year 2012 through 2016 consolidated plan. In addition to the anticipated FYI 2015 funding, staff has included a proposal to reprogram forty-seven thousand dollars of fiscal year 2014 funding that had not been previously allocated to a specific project or activity. As required in the Citizens Participation Plan, staff has published a public notice of the draft annual action plan for 2015 in the May 2016 and seventeen, 2015 edition of the Henry Daily Herald. A thirty-day public comment period was held starting Saturday, May 16th through Monday, June 15th. Copies of the draft plan were made available for public review at numerous locations throughout the county and on the county's website. In preparation of the annual action plan, staff announced that Henry County CDBG program would be accepting applications for eligible uses on Wednesday, December 10th, 2014. Two application workshops or informational sessions were held, and applicant's participation in a workshop was mandatory to be considered for funding. Additionally, a series of needs assessment meetings were held during the months of February and March 2015. Copies of the community needs assessment surveys completed during these meetings will be included in the final document under the Citizens Participation tab and have been provided for the Commissioners. Applications for Henry County CDBG funding were due on Friday, January 23rd. A total of ten applications were received. Staff reviewed the applications specifically based on the project description, implementation schedule and budget, the completeness of application, and additionally, staff reviewed applications to discern each application's proposed target population, anticipated outcome, potential impact to the environment, and compliance with the priority needs identified in the consolidated plan. A strong consideration was also given to applicants who demonstrated high, demonstrated having adequate staff and facility capacity to complete the activity within the program year while ensuring compliance with federal regulations.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Chairman, I'm looking on page thirteen, and I think you mentioned, mentioned to me yesterday that the census tract map with the low-income areas in Henry County, can you put that map up, please, on page thirteen? Is that the revised map of the areas in Henry County that are eligible for CDBG?
No, sir. Unfortunately, this draft was completed prior to the release of those, but I do have that. I received that information on Friday. I can make that available to you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, I will open the floor up for, this would constitute a public hearing. If you would, comments either way, or any comments, please come to the podium, state your name, and I will give a total of fifteen minutes for the entire group. Anybody like to speak? So if you'd like to speak for or against this or make any comments, please come to the podium at this time. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and Board of Commissioners. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to let you know about a program that is on this list that's making a difference in our community. My name is Gina Moore and I direct a local faith-based organization called Crosswalk. Our purpose is to reduce juvenile crime and address the underlying causes of juvenile delinquency through prevention and aftercare programs in the community. One of those programs is Art Reach 180. That's an arts-based after-school program for at-risk teens, piloted in 2010 at Patrick Henry Academy in Stockbridge. With the help of the first round of CDBG funding, we were able to expand that program in 2012 to include students from schools in the southern part of Henry County. This is Kelly Barra here with me and she directs that South Campus location. Through foundation grants and individual support, we've sustained both of those locations in Stockbridge and Luella for the past three years. We currently serve six of the eleven high schools in the county. With the Excel Academy, however, moving to McDonough in the fall, we believe it's time to grow again. And so we want to expand to a third location here in McDonough, which will allow us to serve the youth who are underserved in the central part of the county. On the surface, the teens that we work with are defiant and unfeeling and tough, but when we take the time to look deeper, we find that they're smart, they're incredibly talented, and they're even kind and generous. However, the risk factors in their lives far outweigh the protective factors. They're resentful and angry and sometimes they don't even know why. Society tells them, pull yourself up by your bootstraps, or make good choices in spite of your obstacles. But gentlemen, that behavior hasn't been modeled for them a lot of times and they don't know how to do that. Resilience is a natural human capacity, but it doesn't just happen, especially if all the odds are stacked against you. And so they need positive mentors and a pro-social environment from which to learn those skills. We have forty-five thousand school-aged children in Henry County. I'm sure you're aware of that. You're probably also aware that about a fourth of those are being raised by single parents and about half of those come home to empty homes at the end of the school day. Perhaps that's why about seventy-five percent of all juvenile crime happens between three and seven o'clock on school days. However, the Art Reach 180 youth are involved in a pro-social activity during that time and the results have been significant. Of the one hundred and eighty-six youth who have completed our program at the two locations in the last four years, fewer than seven percent have re-offended and been detained. This compares to the recidivism rate across the state of almost seventy percent of those who have been incarcerated. We believe that our outcomes for Art Reach 180 demonstrate that our program is far more cost-effective than sending these youth to detention. DJJ reports an annual cost of almost eighty-seven thousand dollars to incarcerate one youth for a year. Art Reach 180 can do it for about fifteen hundred dollars per youth per school year. In other words, for every one dollar we spend on prevention, the state will spend fifty-eight dollars for detention. Yet statistically, from ten of, every ten of those who walk out the door of the juvenile detention center, seven of them will be back within three years. Clearly, gentlemen, we must explore diversion programs as an option for our nonviolent juvenile offenders. There are hundreds of teens right now that are teetering on the edge of a cliff and they're at risk of falling. I submit to you tonight, gentlemen, that putting a guardrail at the top of that cliff makes far more sense than waiting till they fall and sending an ambulance to the bottom. I urge you tonight, please approve the recommendation of the CDBG Committee to allocate funds to Crosswalk for the expansion of the Art Reach 180 program in McDonough. Our volunteers, our staff, our parents, our board, all back here to represent us, and Kelly and I, we thank you for your consideration. Please help us to help you make Henry County a safer place. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to be heard at this time? Okay, I'm gonna declare the public hearing portion is over. And we have a resolution in the book that avoids consideration of a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the committee. I'm sorry.
Chairman. I'm a little bit, let me go on record, Chairman. Let me go on record and say that I think that was a tremendous presentation and I support Crosswalk. However, I was told that we had an update, updated county map of the impoverished areas in the county, and I feel uncomfortable voting on this resolution this evening without the updated map in this. So I'm gonna ask if we can table it and if Shannon can come back, bring this resolution back with the updated map on here, because I can't make an educated decision if I don't have all the information.
We have a motion, District Five, to table a resolution approving FYI 2015 annual action plan as part of the fiscal 2012, 2016. Do you have a second?
Can we get a point of clarification from Shannon? Is there any problem with tabling this?
I will have to inform HUD that it will be delayed. They were expecting it on July first, but I can't provide that information to you all this evening. The draft that you have is as of the previous board member, meeting date when the agenda item was submitted.
If it's significant enough, we could have a call meeting between May and July the Do you feel that strongly for it?
You're talking about, I didn't, I didn't hear you. You said bring it back July first? Is that what you said?
Well, what we do is, we can table it and have a call meeting between now and July the first. We'll have to meet requirements.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask that we just table this item and move it down further on the agenda, because Shannon has the information available in her office, and I would hate for us to have to table it, because we'll have to re-advertise?
I don't want.
Us to have to delay this information, sending it to HUD. So if I could just request that the board allow her an opportunity to go to our office and get the map, and then we'll provide it to you all, if that's okay?
Is the gentleman in District Five satisfied with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, the motion died for lack of a second, so on administrative part, I'm going to declare that we're going to hear this at the end.
Do I need to resend?
Sir?
Do I need to resend my motion?
No, it died for lack of a second. Nobody seconded it.
Okay.
So just for housekeeping, we're going to take, and I'm going to say that since we've done that as a group, we won't have to amend the budget to hear it since it's already in the budget. Would you be so kind as to remind me to bring it up at the end, Madam Manager? Okay, while she's absent, we need to do some housecleaning on my fault. Error has occurred. The chair erred. I erred. If you're back up on the agenda, under nine, which says court system, in the heat of battle, I left out three items, resolution request and authorization of the date funds to support resolution. So let's back up to Exhibit Seven, please. I knew the judges were hanging around for some reason. I could tell that when they got through, they were still here, so. So if you'd be so kind as to look at Exhibit Seven, and this right here is, once we approve these three, that's where we actually, in fact, reduce from eight hundred down to seven hundred. So it's all related to what is previously stated. It's all the same numbers, and that's, I think, it don't take much to confuse me, but we have a resolution in the book, the Board of, resolution of Board of Commissioners approving an expenditure of the drug abuse treatment and educational funds for the purpose of supporting Henry County Resource Court and decreasing the date fund balance cap for the end of each fiscal year. So if somebody would move in that direction. Have a motion, District Five, second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Let's move down to Exhibit Eight. Exhibit Eight, we have a resolution of Board of Commissioners approving expenditure of drug abuse treatment and educational fund date for the purpose of supporting Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court and decreasing the date fund balance cap for the end of each fiscal year. If somebody would move in that direction. Have a motion, District One, second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Now let's move to Exhibit Number Nine. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve expenditures of drug abuse treatment and educational funds for the purpose of operating of the Henry County Misdominant DUI Drug Accountability Court and decreasing the date fund minimum maximum cap for each fiscal year. If somebody would move in that direction. Have a motion, District Three, second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Okay. Page two. We're going to hear the resolution approving Henry County NSP designated signers at this point. Can you handle that?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Unless you want to wait.
Next, we have a resolution approving Henry County's NSP designated signers for subordination documents in the event that the participant in the NSP program seeks to refinance their home. That would be Exhibit Number Fourteen.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. In Shannon's absence, I will go ahead and present this item for you all. We have a resolution before you this evening requesting permission to approve the designation of signers to execute subordination documents for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. As you all are aware, Henry County is a recipient of NSP funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Georgia Department of DCA. Recently, the county's NSP program office was made aware of an NSP homeowner's intent to refinance their NSP home. Staff wanted to get some direction, or not maybe get direction, but to get approval from the board to authorize certain individuals to execute the subordination agreements. If you'll notice in the resolution, we're asking permission for the board to authorize either the county manager, assistant county manager, budget director, or community development director to be designated as signers in the event that NSP property owners need subordination documents executed. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir. District One?
This is for the purpose of people on the program to refinance.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question or comment? Have a resolution approving designation of signers for the subordination documents for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion, District Five, second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a resolution awarding a bid for vehicle equipment for the Police Department authorizing the purchase of said equipment from West Chatham Warning Devices. Major Goings, it's always good to see you.
Good to see you as well, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. A resolution before use to award a contract for vehicle equipment for the Police Department and to request the purchase of items utilizing the contract. On March 17, 2015, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 15-84 and 15-85, authorizing the purchase of four new 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe Pursuit vehicles and accessories for the K-9 unit. The Police Department needs to complete the outfitting of the equipment needed for the vehicles. A request was bid through the Purchasing Department and posted on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace and ACCG GLGA. Bid invitations were sent out via the Team Georgia Marketplace, and three vendors responded. The bid tabulation, bid number 1559, indicates West Chatham Warning Devices was the lowest bidder for the equipment and installation. The Police Department requests to award the contract to West Chatham Warning Devices and request to purchase four contracted packages in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents using funds from capital outlays and vehicles.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Major Goings, as we just retired a K-9 just a few minutes ago, it does beg the question, how many K-9s do we actively have right now?
Now that we've retired that one, we have three, and there's two positions that we're looking to fill.
Okay, all right. I just noticed we have four vehicles.
After tonight, we'll have, be filling one with the K-9 for the replacement of Pippo, and the other one would be the one we're looking to do through a grant fund.
A grant fund?
Yes, sir.
What's the timeframe on that?
Well, the vehicles have been ordered, and now that we, if we approve the equipment, then when the vehicles arrive, then we'll already have it in place to be able to install the vehicles.
Any other questions or comments? Have a resolution in the book, Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for vehicle equipment for the Police Department authorizing the purchase of said equipment from West Chatham Warning Devices.
New approved.
I'm going to take the motion from District Four. Have a motion, second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution request to purchase of crowd control equipment for the Henry County Police Department and the budget amendment. Major?
Yes, sir. Hello again. Due to the increase of rioting and protesting across the county, country, Henry County Police Department has met with the Sheriff's Department, the cities of McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove to address concerns of preparedness of law enforcement agencies in Henry County. Agencies have determined a need for specialized equipment to react to civil disturbances. Henry County Police Department has uniformly agreed to train with the different agencies in Henry County to share proficiencies, philosophies, and inter-agency deployment. To that extent, the department needs to outfit themselves with equipment to properly handle these volatile incidences. Without this equipment, we are unprepared to maintain a safe environment for our citizens and protesters alike. The Police Department is requesting to purchase protective body gear, body shields, head gear, and batons for the safety of the officers while addressing a riot or a civil disturbance incident. The Police Department has coordinated with the Purchasing Department concerning this equipment. The recommendation is to purchase the equipment from the Georgia Department of Public Safety Access Property Program based on the pricing provided by the GSA contract, GS 07F 0512 T Tong, at a total of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. The department is requesting to reallocate thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from the Uniform Patrol Salary Savings to the Uniform Patrol Small Equipment and General Supply Funds. Once the reallocation is completed, the department will have the funds available for the purchase of the requested equipment. We're recommending to approve the reallocation of thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from Uniform Patrol Salary Savings and move sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents to the Uniform Patrol Small Equipment and nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents to General Supplies. Further recommendation is to approve the purchase of crowd control equipment in the amount of a total twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars for the Police Department.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Major Goings, are the other municipalities also buying this equipment for their officers? Now?
We're spearheading it, and what we're going to do is, they're going to, once we receive ours, then we're going to start conducting training. They're going to order as well, based proportionately on the sizes of the cities, and we're going to do a lot of joint training. It's going to involve SWAT team, as well as the Sheriff's Department's SRT, and some of the uniformed officers within the city municipalities as well.
And how many officers is this going to dress out?
I believe it's approximately twenty. It's going to be the SWAT team initially that we're going to give it to because of their advanced level of training, and then we're going to go from there.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Have a resolution in the book, resolution of Board of Commissioners authorizing Henry County Police Department to purchase crowd control equipment and associated budget amendment.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Four, second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, sirs.
Thank you. You have a good evening. Request to award the purchase of stretchers and stair chairs for remount ambulance for the Henry County Fire Department in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Chief, how you doing?
Good, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, agenda item for the purchase stretchers and stair chair for the new remount ambulances that were approved during capital approval back in February, the trucks are ordered. This purchase went through purchasing process and has been awarded to More Medical through the NJPA contract 08614 for the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. It's our recommendation to go with this purchase of the stretcher equipment for the new ambulances.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Have a resolution, Board of Commissioners requesting award the purchase stretchers and stair chairs for remount ambulance in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-eight cents to More Medical. Have a motion, District One?
Same.
Second District Four. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Request to purchase one Chevrolet Tahoe Pursuit for the Henry County Fire Department.
Yes, sir. This is, if you are well aware, a few months back, we had a, was involved in an accident when our battalion chiefs responding to an incident was involved in an accident which totaled the expedition that he was driving. This purchase is to replace the expedition with a Tahoe on state bid price from Hardy Chevrolet for the amount of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. This will be taken out of funds from that accident plus funds from capital budget.
Anybody else have, anybody have any questions or comments? We have a request to purchase one Chevrolet Tahoe Pursuit for the Fire Department. You have a question, you have a motion. Have a motion, District Three?
Same.
Second District Four. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding purchase of three thermal image cameras in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred.
Yes, sir. This is the cameras we used in event of a house fire for rescue that you can see through the smoke, the thermal imagers. This is part of the capital purchase for the new fire trucks that are on order at this time. Through seal bid 15-62, Navco was the most responsive bidder at fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars even. It's our recommendation that we reward this bid to Navco for fourteen thousand, four
Anybody have any comments or questions? Have a resolution, Board of Commissioners requesting, request to award a purchase of three thermal image cameras in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred. Somebody move, we're afraid. Have a motion, District Three, second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Chief. Fourteen item A has been removed. We will move to B, resolution awarding a bid for a dump truck rental for the Henry County Department of Transportation. Terry, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. We are requesting award of some rental of dump trucks. Rental of dump trucks is required by the DOT to haul asphalt and other paving materials when needed. Having a contract for the rental of dump trucks allows us quick access without the necessity of bidding each time dump trucks are needed and guarantees prices will remain firm for one year. Request was processed through the Purchasing Department. Bid documents were posted on the county website. Bid notice was also listed on the ACCG GLGA website. One vendor submitted a bid for this request. It was Faultless Business Center located in McDonough. Our DOT recommends award, and of course, a bid sheet is attached with the prices on that. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have a resolution for the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for dump truck rental for the Henry County Department of Transportation. Somebody would move in that direction.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Four. We need a second to buy a dump truck.
Same.
Have a second, District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, thank you. You almost missed out on that truck.
You had me worried there, sir. Thank you.
Sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents an hour. Resolution to amend fee schedule for the Henry County Building and Plan Review Department. George, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members. I bring before you, Henry County Building and Plan Review is currently in the need of amending the current fee schedule, which I'm going to place up there now.
And the items to be amended is the residential land disturbance permit of seventy-five dollars, the business license charging a fee of a hundred dollars, and that's solely on new businesses, not a renewal, and five hundred dollars for cell tower fees. The fees was last amended in seventeen, seventeen November, 2009. The increase will generate additional revenue to help promote the department. Just ran a few numbers, currently from May, excuse me, from July 1st last year to May 31st, we currently had two hundred and fifty business licenses. We've had sixty-seven cell towers and residential land development permit. We had a thousand and thirty. That will roughly generate a hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars will, that's what, that's what helped the department purchase vehicles in the future, and that's funds that does not have to come out of general funds. and that's funds that does not have to come out of general funding.
Anybody else have any comments or question?
Yes, sir. George, looking at the fees, what did we charge for a plan review fee?
Electronically?
Yes, sir.
We don't charge anything for electronically planned review submittal, but we pay $12,000, $12,000 a year. $9,300 for Sage Gov., which is Electronic Plan Review Submittal Program, and Blue Beam for the markup.
So, as I understand it, and the citizens are paying, I guess, for the review of plans? Where's the money coming from for the review of plans?
The money actually comes from the department, the revenues in the department. Currently, this year during this budget, we have basically used majority of the money within the department, purchasing new software for plan review, electronic plan review submittal, Blue Beam, additional equipment. First time we had uniforms, probably the last five or six years, boots, just a number of things that we've been able to purchase and improve the services within the department. We currently moving forward with expanding the lobby area because it's just, it's just so tight. But the majority of the money is being used within the department.
Okay. Now, I noticed we're not doing the residential permit fees, which we've talked to that several times. What were the permit fees, residential permit fees in, let's say, 2008?
The dollar amount per thousand?
Yes, sir.
The dollar amount per thousand, the fees were $4, and I think that was prior to 2003 when we adopted the impact fees.
Okay.
So the impact fees, I guess, makes up the difference.
When were the fees lowered from $4 to $3.70?
2007.
And who advised the board at that time? Was it the director or?
It was the Director of the Building Department.
Again, I'd like to put this in front of the board. I'd like to see the fees go back up to what they were prior to 2007. I know I've heard from many people that they have expressed concern that it will affect growth in the county, but I will remind the board that these fees were $4 in 2003, 2004. Is that correct?
Correct.
And at that year, I believe we were the third and fourth fastest growing county in the United States, if I'm not mistaken. Don't quote me exactly on that. So I'm not sure those fees are going to affect the growth rate of this county, but I do know that we've got some things on the table, and I'll talk to some of the citizens about what we got going on. We're in preliminary talks right now with Georgia Tech, having them look at our future land use map. As you know, you know, how this affects the citizens, not too long ago, we had a room full of people, and they were in here objecting to a family dollar being put in, in basically a pasture. And the family dollar people had looked into, and on the future land use map, it was shown as able to be commercial. So, you know, part of what we can do up here for the future is have the future land use map changed to where we put residential where residential needs to be, we put high density residential where residential needs to be, we put commercial where commercial needs to be. But I don't feel that the citizens should pay for us to pay Georgia Tech to come in and help us plan for the future of this county. I do feel that the builders and developers, it helps them. It doesn't do anything for our community, for our citizens. It does, but I don't think they should pay for it. So I would just, again, like to put it in front of the board, just to bring the fees back to what they were prior to 2007. So I know it's not on the agenda today to vote on, but I just like to put that out there for the citizens, again, to look at.
George, why did they lower the fees?
Going back and doing research, I think they lowered the fees when they implemented the dollar amount for the impact fees. So I guess it was a balancing act with the 1661 for the impact fees, so they lowered the building fees per thousand.
So the impact fees are, are they still the same?
Yes, impact fees are still the same.
Okay.
1661.
Yes, sir.
Does your department get anything from the impact fees?
No. The Building Department does not receive any funds in, for the impact fees are concerned. It's debbie up between the services for the incoming citizens who's purchasing the homes, fire, parking reg, 911, police, those type of departments.
So in essence, your fees were lowered, the other fees were increased, but you don't get an increase in revenue in yours? Your revenue went down?
Correct.
Yes, sir, District Two.
George, I just want to know, on impact fees, does it matter the square footage of the house? Does a 5,000 square foot house have the same impact fee as a 1,300 square foot?
5,000, 15,000, they all have the same amount for impact fees.
So you could have a house.
In some jurisdiction where we did research, it's based off of square footage. Some are, some not. Some jurisdictions don't even have impact fees, but their permit fees are much higher.
Right.
So.
So you're just squeezing the balloon in a different way?
Correct. Some jurisdictions don't have splosh, but they charge real high impact fees, like Sarasota, Florida, $7,400 impact fees per house. Doesn't matter what size the house is, $7,400, and it goes to roads, schools, 911, fire, police.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? District Four?
Ask the board to consider raising the fees back to what they were and consider looking at a review fee, which we do not have at all. So I mean, in essence, you have employees who are reviewing plans that are not getting paid by the people that are, they're reviewing the plans for. So I just want to bring that up to the attention of the board.
Yes, sir, District Three.
I don't have any problem whatsoever with what you're presenting us tonight, and I think we've got to look at everything, but until we do a full audit, I couldn't consider doing anything other than what we're doing here tonight. You know, I know we've talked about having a full audit done, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but that would actually tell us exactly what we're making in the Building Department, because there's a lot of different departments that are tied to this that's probably not being coded just right.
Okay. Can we implement an audit? I mean, have we started that? We had discussed that once before of actually looking at what we were spending. County Manager?
No, the department hadn't done an audit. We just done assessment of local jurisdictions within the state of Georgia that's similar to Henry County, and I presented those numbers early in March, and that's pretty much where we stand at.
There was just some concerns expressed, and I, you know, I understand the concerns that the money from the Building Department was getting bled over into the general budget and paying for things that didn't have anything to do with the Building Department.
Well, in this current past budget, our salaries, the budget was 1.3 point something, and salary was $945,000. So it was roughly on about $400, $400,000 to spend within the department, and we pretty much used every dime we had, so.
Right.
So the money is pretty much being spent within the Building Department.
County Manager, can we do an audit, maybe take a look at everything, get some numbers? I mean, it's something that we can actually look at and discuss and talk about.
Yes, sir. We can definitely go back and look at the revenues versus the expenditures within the Building Department. And what we'll do is we'll look at the previous fiscal year because we haven't closed this year out. But I think what's going to be most important is to look at the period when we were at a downturn versus the period where we were experiencing a high number of building permits. But I think that's something that we can do internally and then report back to the board on.
Also, project out future, because we need to look at the future again. You know, we can't budget, we don't do the budget based on what we did last year. We set the budget and the tax rates on what we're going to do the next year. So let's make sure that we, you know, compare apples and apples, because I mean, there's some things coming up that we need to do, and again, I can't stress this enough, I really want our employees in the Building Department going to training.
Yes.
I cannot stress this enough. It will save the county a lot of time and money in reviews, and, you know, I get to see it every day when I go and see a house, and I show the pictures of many of the Commissioners where the entire backside of the house, all the bricks falling off. Had an inspector known what to look for, this problem wouldn't have happened. And I'd like to point out to the citizens, just so they know, when they have homeowner's insurance and something like that happens, it's not covered by homeowner's insurance. So when, and I see it every day, I go out, I see homes that foundations are cracking, that things that, you know, build on burial pits, things that if they had proper training or if they had the employees to do so, these problems wouldn't have risen. But a homeowner is not protected from an error made by a builder on their insurance. That's something that comes out of their pockets. So I just want everybody to know why I'm pressing this so hard.
But, but for an example, if a foundation cracked, that's not part of an inspector. An inspector went out and checked the footings. After he checked the footings, then the slab was pulled. Now, whether the mix of the concrete was adequate, that's a different story. But you got your point in that, like I said, we are sending people to training, currently workshops, conferences, so we are doing additional training, also looking forward to sending our clerical staff to customer service training.
Right.
Because you have to be able to deal with the citizens that are coming in. Every citizen that comes through the door is not going to have a great attitude because they're getting ready to spend money, you know, so. And I do want to make a recommendation, if we're going to try to do an audit, let's probably do another year in the budget cycle so we'll have a true count of what the revenue is, because you got to figure, we only been a year and a half moving forward out of the recession. So I think we should do, wait on another budget year, and then come back and do an audit on the department. Just an opinion.
Any other questions, or District Two?
George, are there any plans to also go, while y'all are bringing in outside consultants and other things, to look at those impact fees and other things? Because I mean, just echoing what I've seen from citizens, I mean, weekends, every weekend, the interstates are jammed, our backroads are jammed. I mean, and I know, just my education as a Commissioner, I was originally told if you go larger square footage, you know, you're going to get quality in the community. And then, you know, now we have this wording that there was a push for bigger lot size, and that's not exactly fair to say that we have to go to bigger, bigger lot size. What made more sense is thinking about it from a square footage standpoint, because I mean, it's not uncommon now with a lot of communities where you see houses with multiple master bedrooms, three floors, 5,000 square feet, and to have multiple families living in one house only paying $1,700 versus a smaller house that's 1,300 square feet paying the exact same fee, it doesn't seem to be representative of the actual impact. I mean, and once you're a citizen of our community, we want to make sure that you're getting the best service possible, and it's not fair that we're leveraging our future by not actually charging what it costs when you build a new house in the community, because you're basically putting it on the taxpayers and not on the people that are creating that impact.
Any other discussion, any questions, comment? Have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend the fee schedule for the Henry County Building and Planning Review Department. Have a motion, District Three? Second District One? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. What I'd like to do without any objection from the board, as I understand that Shannon is prepared now, is I would like to, without objection, is to revisit the Community Development Action Plan as part of the FY 2012, 2016 Consolidated Plan. With no objection, Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, what we have here is the updated map. What has changed are the census block groups which are eligible based on our low to moderate income exception exemption criteria. And I believe this is what Commissioner Holmes was referring to.
This is what I wanted to see, because, you know, there are some agencies located in some other areas of the county, and you told me that the low to moderate income radius has changed, and this is a significant change from where it was about three to four years ago.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking that there was a possibility that some of the organizations up in the Fairview community would qualify. However, I don't see any low to moderate income in Fairview. Can you explain why the growth of these, of these low to moderate areas have grown?
Yes, sir.
And why the radius has grown?
What I can explain is what occurred to, to show the shift in, or the increase in the shaded census block groups. It is our exception criteria that reduces the general rule, which states that 51% of an area's population must be low to moderate income in order for it to meet the eligibility requirements for area benefit activities under CDBG. Previously, our exception criteria was 44.59%, and it is currently just over 39%. HUD extends the exception criteria to allow jurisdictions that have few areas that meet that 51% to be able to carry out activities in those areas. And this is typical for communities that are, we'll say, more affluent, that don't have many census block groups that are 51% or greater low mod.
What's really sad to me is that when you look along I-75, I mean, that's where, you know, that's where you see the low to moderate income. And then also, it doesn't make much sense. We look at Hampton, I mean, we have an airport out there, we also have the Atlanta Motor Speedway. You know, is, do you think it's from the type of development we're attracting, the type of standards we're now putting on our residential development? Was that a question you can answer? Maybe, Sharon, maybe you can answer that.
I prefer not to speak to that.
Could you repeat the question, sir? I'm sorry.
I was talking about the, the increase in low to moderate income radius, and I was, I was just curious, you know, why is it along I-75 when that's considered prime real estate? And also, why is it in Hampton when we have the Atlanta Motor Speedway and an airport in Hampton? I mean, those areas should be booming, especially now.
I certainly believe, and I don't, I'm not an expert on why the census tracks numbers actually delineate the low to moderate income, but I would imagine that it's based on the land uses that are currently on the ground. I understand the Speedway is in place, but there's also residential housing units that also make up that census block tract, and I certainly don't contribute it to the type of development that we're promoting within the county. It's probably just what's already on the ground. Again, without knowing all the details and just receiving this, I don't have a lot of details to give you a good answer, but certainly can do some research and make a better assessment if you'll afford me that opportunity.
Is there any way we can turn this trend around in these particular areas?
Certainly, it, it all depends on, and I think it's twofold. Our future land use map plays an important role on the type of land uses that we bring into our community. It's very important to not just focus on single-family residential. Commercial does support areas. I know industrial, that's the big thing, but commercial is the driving force as far as our economic development, as far as our tax digest. So those are things that we at the staff level, Dante and his group, can go back and revisit when we are looking at our future land use map. But we also need to look at promoting businesses beyond just your strip centers. You're going to have to look at bringing in businesses that are going to bring in some high-paying jobs and more white-collar jobs to the community. So that's something certainly that we can look at. I certainly think that we're trying to do that in some of the businesses that we are trying to get here, and I also think that we too have to be very cognizant of conditions that we place on developments, because sometimes that can be a hindrance to some commercial businesses that do want to come in. So those are things that we can look at, but certainly understand your concern, and we'll definitely work towards promoting other businesses within the county.
Thank you.
I realize that the shading on the map appears to be a lot, but I'd also just like to put emphasis on the fact that this exemption criteria exists for Henry County because we do not have areas or many. we do not have areas, or many areas, that meet the general rule of 51%, which means that we don't have as much low-mod income as most other jurisdictions.
We have a lot here inside these shaded areas, correct?
That meet the concentration, a degree of concentration of 39%.
Okay.
We don't have many, if any, that meet the 51%.
Thank you.
Is there a tie in any way to that opportunity zone? Does it?
No, sir.
Work together, no way?
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? We've already satisfied the public hearing part of this. We have a resolution to book approving the FY 2015 Annual Action Plan as part of the physical FY 2012-2016 Consolidated Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second District Four. Any further discussion? Only in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move to a resolution approving a budget amendment for utility relocation of Harris Drive. Rocky?
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. Harris Drive is an approved District One Splotz Ford Transportation Improvement Project that is currently under construction. The board approved construction of Harris Drive as per Resolution Number 15-88 on March 17, 2015. On May 5, 2015, the Splotz Office received an estimate of $70,175.81 from Central Georgia EMC to relocate distribution facilities that are in conflict with the Harris Drive construction. Additional funds in the amount of $70,175.81 are needed for the Central Georgia EMC utility relocation costs. Staff recommends using $70,175.81 from District One Locust Road at Jackson Street at Stairway 42. And for these funds to be available after January 2016. Georgia Department of Transportation has already improved the intersection of Locust Road, Jackson Street at Stairway 42 with installation of a traffic signal. A budget amendment is needed in the amount of $70,175.81 for Central Georgia EMC utility relocation, transferring funds from the Locust Road, Jackson Street at Stairway 42 to Harris Drive. The Locust Road, Jackson Street at Stairway 42 will be reduced from $1.1 million to $1,029,824.19. Staff recommends approval of this budget amendment in the amount of $70,175.81 transferring funds from District One Locust Road, Jackson Street at Stairway 42 to the Harris Drive project.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Rocky, I, this project is becoming somewhat of a challenge, I think.
Yes, sir.
With that being said, I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from District One approving the resolution Henry County Board of Commissioners approving a budget amendment for utility relocation of Harris Drive. Have a motion. Have a second. District got three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Resolution approving the purchase of police vehicle equipment for 15, $2015 charges for the Henry County Police Department using Splotz Ford funds. Mr. Burke-Halton, good evening.
In November 2013, the voters of Henry County approved the Splotz Ford referendum, which included funds for 30 new police patrol vehicles for the Henry County Police Department. The Henry County Splotz Department requested quotes from the purchasing department for the police patrol vehicle equipment for 15 new 2015 chargers. And the quotes are provided as follows. 15 Panasonic Toughbook computers from CDWG using a GSA contract in the amount of $42,528. 15 radar systems from Decatur Electronics using a GSA contract in the amount of $28,540.35. 15 ProLaser 4 LiDAR units from Lakota Contracting using a GSA contract in the amount of $38,775. 15 mobile radio packages from Loudon Communications using a GSA contract in the amount of $58,273.50. And finally, 15 WatchGuard in-car video packages from Computec International using a GSA contract in the amount of $75,300. The Henry County Splotz Department is requesting authorization to use Splotz Ford funds to purchase the above-listed equipment for the remaining 15 new police patrol vehicles using GSA state contracts in the amount of $243,416.85.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Have a resolution, Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of police vehicle for 15, $2015 charges for Henry County Police Department using Splotz Ford funds.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Four. Second District Three. Any further discussion? Only in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing. RZ 15-07, Steve Moore, McDonough, request rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to RT Single Family for a property located on Mount Bethel Road, south of Mariana Road and Land Lot 116 at 8th District. Your property consists of 33.348 acres. Request is for single-family dwelling.
Yes, sir. Steve Moore is presenting this, and I do have business dealings with Moore Bass. I have no vested interest in this project at all. Is there a conflict there?
The only time there would be a conflict is if you have, you or an immediate family member have a financial interest in this project.
Okay.
Otherwise, you are free to.
That I do not. Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RA Residential Agricultural to RT Single Family Residential, or Residence. The subject property is designated by the future land use map as low-density residential. And the applicant is proposing a 28-lot craftsman-style home, single-family residential subdivision with a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet, yielding a net density of 1.38 units per acre and minimum house size of 2,000 square feet. If successfully rezoned, the applicant estimates project commencement sometime in the fall of this year and completion sometime spring of 2016. The zoning advisory board recommended approval with the following seven conditions. Condition number one, all houses shall be built on-site, no modular or manufactured homes, and shall have two-car side entry garages where feasible. Condition number two, all homes shall consist of all sides brick, stone, stucco, or any combination of two or more of the following materials on all sides: brick, stone, stucco, or cement fiber board. Vinyl-based products are only permitted in asphalt, eaves, and phasia. Condition number three, sidewalks shall be installed along both sides of all streets within the development. Condition four, all yards shall be sided to the rear drip line of the house. Condition five, the development shall have a centralized mailbox location. Condition number six, any new site access is to be located such that the minimum intersection site distance is met per the posted speed limit and the D-cell lane and A-cell taper is required to be designed and constructed to the Henry County DOT standards. And condition number seven, notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, no zoning conditions imposed shall be interpreted or applied in a manner so as to require any violation of any existing building, development, stormwater, and/or any other applicable codes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Dante, I know that you just mentioned the 2,000-square-foot minimum, but I didn't see it in the summary report, or the, under the conditions.
Yes, sir. In the executive summary, the, we mentioned that the discussions with the applicant did state that he, I'm sorry, I'll show you. I'll put it on the overhead. One moment.
I think it also needs to be reflected in the resolution.
Yes, it's not in the resolution, or the executive summary that I see.
I don't think it'd be important to be in the executive summary, but it's definitely important, if that's what you want, for it to be in the resolution.
We can amend the resolution to include it.
Yeah, it's not on there, and I would like to make that part of the conditions. But I do want to ask the applicant, I looked over the minutes of the meeting, and Jim Richer had requested that the minimum go to 2,200 square feet. And I think we can talk to Steve about that, see if he's got an issue with that when he comes up.
Anybody else have any questions? Dante?
After the hearing?
Sure.
You'd like to whack it now?
Save my comments till.
Oh, okay. Okay, if, would the applicant please come forward, please? State your name and for the record.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Steve Moore, I'm with Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia. Here tonight representing the applicant and owner of this property on Mount Bethel Road. Yes, as Dante mentioned, this, the subject property is 33.4 acres of land, and we're proposing to develop, or to rezone it for 28 lots. When I was first brought this project, the owner said, "Look, you know, however this thing ends up, I don't want it to look like a typical subdivision with straight roads and no curb appeal." Had given pretty clear instruction that this thing needed to look nice. I mean, it was just needed to flow. We added a lot of, as you can see, just curves in the road, just to try to generate a decent curb appeal. His intent is to develop this similar to the Sage Creek development on the Guin Mill Road. Those same type of homes, the same level of development, the same type of entry features and such. The, the project does have, consists of public streets. We do have a central mailbox kiosk located at the main entrance. In addition, we have nine acres of open space. That is, most of it is in the floodplain, but it is not swampy, boggy floodplain. It's actually, would be, you know, usable for some type of passive recreation facility. In addition, we've also provided just an access to that open space area from the streets, as you can see in the layout right here. And we've also got the proposed detention pond located in that area as well. We're proposing a 25-foot landscape buffer along Mount Bethel Road, as you can see here, just to buffer any of the rears of those houses from, from the, from Mount Bethel Road. And again, that area would be enhanced with firms and landscaping and fencing, consistent, again, with Sage Creek development. We have read the recommendations from staff on their original report, and we're in agreeance with those. We did have, during the zoning board hearing, there was a discussion, Mr. Richer had asked if we would consider an increase from 2,000 to 2,200 square feet, which we agreed that we could live with that. And tonight, we're still okay with that. And all of the other conditions are acceptable to us, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Yes, sir.
District Three.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
In the conditions, it didn't identify that all homes shall be craftsman-style. You don't have a problem with that, us making that part of the condition, do you?
Um, no, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, that is the intent.
Well, I visited Sage Creek, and I really like the development. I love the concept. Brush Arbor is very similar to that.
Yes, sir.
There's no two houses that look alike, and it really is going to add a lot to that area down there. I'm looking forward to y'all getting started with this project. I think it'll fit very well. The only thing that I didn't like about Sage Creek, and I'll tell you, I hope that you align your sidewalk up with your curb and follow the curb. I really didn't like the snake-type of sidewalk. It just didn't really appeal to me. But
Yes, sir.
I'll leave that up to you. And are y'all going to be using the decorative lighting down there that you used at Sage Creek for the street lighting?
I would assume that it would be very similar to that. I have, we haven't got to that level of design, but I would assume to maintain harmony with that project, all of the other architectural features are going to be consistent with that. And I would assume that Georgia Power has a decorative light post that would be easy enough to use in there as well.
It's a good project.
Yes.
Anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir.
I have to tell you, I'm getting a little turned off with the smaller lots. And let me tell you why. Commissioner Barham and I have two things coming down the pipe, where we have the smaller lots and the builders coming in and building the big house. And I see in your conditions here, number one, is she'll have side entry garage, and Dante can attest to this. When we do the side entry garage on the smaller lots, we actually don't have enough room for the cars to turn around.
I understand.
And so, now we're at a point, and Commissioner Barham will be, and I will have to vote on this in both of our districts, what do we do now that we've made the lots real small, and they're putting big houses on these small lots? And, you know, it just seems that the developers and the builders are not communicating. Developers want to get as many lots as they can. Builders want the biggest, you know, the biggest house and nicest house they can get. But now we're at a point to where they can't fit the house on the lot. So, you know, I'm not real keen on the smaller lots. This does fit in the area. I will say this, the layout is fantastic. I like the fact you put the curves in the streets. I get more phone calls from people complaining about people speeding down the streets. The easiest fix is curves in the street.
Yeah.
It will slow traffic down. It also doesn't look like a drag strip. I appreciate that. I like that. That's really a selling factor. But, you know, we just need to look at, you know, we start, again, getting bigger homes, and then we get into issue of side setbacks. And there's a couple lots, I don't have areas or anything on here, so I can't really tell. And I don't see a scale, so I couldn't scale it. But a couple of the lots look a little goofy. But what size houses are these that you're showing on here?
They're roughly a 60-by-50 pad, so 3,000 feet. Obviously, some of that is garage. Typically, and I'll tell you, in this downturn, we've done a lot of zoning modifications and tried to make lots that were developed back when everybody wanted as many as they could cram on there, make them work with houses that people want now. And one of the biggest challenges is side entry garages, and making them fit on an 80 or 90-foot wide lot. And basically, and I've been laying out subdivisions for 25 years, but anything less than 90-foot wide is a challenge to get a side entry garage on. These are all 125-foot minimum. So, I really don't think you're going to have any areas that are pinched so close to where you couldn't make a side entry garage work in some fashion. It may take a different architectural footprint to make it fit. They may have to slide the house back a little bit on the cul-de-sacs. You know, they may have to not be able to put the house right up on the setback line and build a longer driveway, which certainly adds to the curb appeal, I think. But I don't think you're going to have a challenge on this with accommodating side entry garages. But I do appreciate and understand that concern, because I have lived that for the last five or six years.
Yeah, like I say, we've got that coming down the pipe for both, both our districts. So, I don't see a problem with it. We'll have to see if there's any objections from the public. But I do appreciate the layout, though.
Yes.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, I'm going to open the floor up. 15 minutes total for people that would like to voice their opinion for this. And I will allow 15 minutes total for people that like to voice their opinion against it. So, having said that, if you, the first 15 minutes would be, if you're in favor of this rezoning request, please come to the podium, state your name. Haven't seen none. If you're in opposition of this request, if you'd be so kind as to come to the podium and state your name. Haven't seen none, I have determined that the, we have met the requirements of the public hearing. So, if the applicant would come back forward, please. And it appears that District Three has comments and some amendments to the resolution.
Yes, Chairman, I would love to go ahead and approve this resolution with two, with changing the wording on number two a little bit to read, "All homes shall be..." be Craftsman style, consisting of all sides, brick, stone, stucco, or any combination of two or more of the following materials on all sides, brick, stone, stucco, or cement fiber board. Final base products are only permitted in the soffits, the eve of the facades." And I would also like to add a eighth condition, that the minimum square feet of the homes will be 2,200 square feet.
Is the applicant satisfied or happy with the 2,200 square feet minimum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution, approve the rezoning by Steve Moore from RA Residential Agriculture to RT, Single Family Residential, for property located on Mount Bethel Road, south of, how you pronounce that?
Marynapa.
Marynapa. Road, and landlot 116 of the Eighth District, consisting of 33.34 acres plus or minus. Somebody's second in motion. Is there a second District One?
Wait, Dante's got something.
Commissioner Barron, if you. Wanted decorative light fixtures as a condition, um, that, that may be something you want to consider, because that will not be something Georgia Power takes into consideration if they're just installing without the condition.
Yeah, let's just, let's go with the yes. I think they'll do them.
Okay, we have a motion. On our favor, any further discussion or questions? If not, on our favor the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
COMP dash AM 15 dash zero one. Real OG Properties LLC of McDonough, Georgia, requests an amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located at 928 North Highway 42 and Land Lot 93 of the Seventh District. This request is to amend the future land use. Dante?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use map designation of the subject property, and this, this case is actually running concurrent with the next item on the agenda, uh, which is a rezoning. But back to the request to amend the future land use map, um, they're asking, or the applicant is asking to amend the, the flume or the future land use map from low-density residential, uh, concerning the subject property, which is here. From low-density residential to commercial, uh, the subject property is currently utilized as an office, and the zoning district of the subject property is currently O.I., uh, which is Office Institutional. It's not consistent with the future, it's inconsistent with the future land use map designation of low-density residential, and based on how the area is developing as commercial. Here, 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 and further down 42. The, the applicant's request would clarify the county's policy regarding an area that has already been zoned non-residential and in which commercial development has already begun, and the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the request.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Uh, I'll just make one comment. I, I've talked to the folks here on the front row this morning, and they had a concern, and I think we've got all that worked out, so I don't see any problem, any questions. I had to have a few questions, and Dante, uh, spelled it out for me, so I don't really have any issues with it.
Okay, having said that, this constitutes a requirement to have a public hearing. I will allow 15 minutes, uh, total, and so if anybody would like to make any comments surrounding this, uh, request, please step forward to the podium and state your name, please. Seeing none, I have determined we met the requirements of the public hearing for this issue, so there is a resolution to book approving request for Real OG Properties to amend the Hunter County Future Land Use Map designation from low-density residential to commercial for property located at 928 Highway 42 and Land Lot Number 93 of the Seventh District, consisting of 2.599 plus or minus acres. Have a motion from District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? On our favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. That brings us up to the same issue. RZ 15 dash four, Real OG Property LLC of McDonough, Georgia, requests a rezoning from Office Institutional to C3 Highway Commercial for property located at 928 North Highway 42, Land Lot 93. Dante?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from O.I., Office Institutional, to C3 Highway Commercial for a contracting business and the sale of storage buildings. I'm gonna place a picture of the subject property, so you can kind of see what's out This use is considered heavy consumer goods in the ULDC, uh, which is permitted in the C3 zoning district. Uh, this area is transitioning, as I stated earlier, during the, um, request for the amending of the, of the future land use map, uh, is, is transitioning to a commercial node indicated by the commercial zone properties nearby that are zoned C1 Neighborhood Commercial, C2 General Commercial, and C3 Highway Commercial. And I'll, I'll place that map on the overhead for you. So in the applicant's request, um, if rezoned to what they're requesting is C3, um, you'll be providing a precedence for the rezoning request, and the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the request with four conditions. And they, and they are as follows. Condition number one, the future right-of-way of Highway 42 North will be preserved from the development of any future improvements, such as required parking spaces, new replacement signs, et cetera, in an event, in an area extending 60 feet from the center line of Highway 42 North. Any future development will be bound by a front setback beginning at the future right-of-way line. Condition number two, dumpsters shall be placed on a concrete pad and enclosed on three sides and shall not be visible from the street. The enclosure shall be constructed of brick, stone, stucco, or any combination thereof, provided it is consistent with the primary structure, and shall not exceed eight feet in height. Condition three, primary ground signage shall consist of a monument, monument-based sign that is consistent in design with the primary structure, constructed of brick, stone, stucco, or any combination thereof, and shall not exceed eight feet in height. And condition four, notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, no zoning condition imposed herein shall be interpreted or applied in such a manner as to, so as to require any violation of any existing building development, stormwater, and/or any other applicable codes.
Anybody have any comments or question?
Just want to call, uh, hold on something, they will be using their existing driveway.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments or question? If not, we, uh, we, uh, this right here requires a, uh, public hearing, so since the first one went smooth, I'm gonna allow the 15 minutes for both side. Well, we need to get the applicant up. I, I jumped ahead. Would the applicant please come forward? You influence me there. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, appreciate y'all hearing this case. I guess I'll start by saying that, uh, me and my partner started this company in, uh, 2009, out of the back of our trucks and, and the kitchen of our houses. Uh, we built it up to a point to where we've, we finally reached a place where we could acquire this property. Basically, this zoning, uh, you know, like Dante was saying, is, is really just to open up more avenues of different businesses that we can, we can bring to the community, uh, to, uh, to help prosper our employees and ourselves as well, uh, you know, generate more tax revenue and everything else. That's really the main thing, is, is, is we found this property, and that property is in a location, uh, that I think is kind of surrounding it of commercial stuff going. So that's really the, the main thing, just, we don't really plan on doing any kind of major changes to the building or any kind of development changes to the property, uh, other than just opening up more avenues, uh, of business for us to, to conduct.
Okay, anybody got a question? An applicant?
I don't this time. I think somebody noticed when you opened up up here.
Yeah, I'm fixing to open up. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time here, I would, uh, open the floor at 15 minutes for anybody that would be opposed to this particular zoning. If you are opposed this, please come to the podium and state your name and your issue. Ma'am?
She's not opposed. She just got a question.
Oh, yeah, well, okay, I'll get to that in just a minute. Okay, so let the record show that no one spoke in opposition of this, so now we'll open it up. Anybody in favor of it, come forward. State your name, please.
My name is Rhonda Blake, and I live at 20 Coffey Lane, which is his neighbor. I'm not opposed whatsoever. I think it's beautiful what he's done. It's really improved our area. My family owns a salvage yard right there on 42, so it's a beautiful view to me. Um, I just ask that there be, um, some type of, uh, where the water comes back off the property, uh, because there's been a lot of clearing there, uh, and it is, the water is coming down on me towards the, the, the back of my yard, and that's the only thing I'm really concerned about, um, is maybe something be done there. And I know he's not finished. I know there's only so much he can do, and then things had to stop, you know? But that's the only thing I'm a little concerned about, is just some, if, you know, if we could just have some type of buffer, like a silk fence, something, uh, till he can get his grading finished. I know he's got more things to do. That's my only concern with it, but I think it's great what he's done with the place.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else like to be heard at this time?
What grading? What, what grading? Was there grading on the site?
It was raining, so, well, we had a bad rain a while back. I mean, we got a lot of inches of rain at that time, I know. We live right there on the water reservoir, and it was just a lot of rain that came in on top of us, that, you know, it had been woods and everything for a long, long time, and that was stopping some of the water that was coming on the back, uh, side of our property. That was it. But I think that can be handled maybe with, um, sorry.
But, but before we get into this discussion, uh, does anybody else like to be heard for the public hearing? Okay, if not, I'm gonna declare that the public hearing requirement has been met. Now, ma'am, if you would return back to the podium.
Sure. Okay.
And then I will yield the floor to District Four, and now you can continue the dialogue on the questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's okay. Um, grading, what, what kind of grading? Because we shouldn't be doing any grading out there without.
No, there's no grading. It was just clearing up some trees and stuff. There was no grading. It's just clearing up some trees and some underbrush is all it was.
Would it change the pattern of the flow?
It, we got five or six inches of rain that week. There was a lot of rain that came through. It's nothing to do necessarily of what he did. We got a lot of rain.
Correct.
But there, you know, just the underbrush and stuff that he didn't clear it out. He's not done any grading or changed any way the land. He's done nothing like that, but it's just like, my gosh, if you take down shrubbery or any type of greenery, that's holding water back. So no, he did nothing wrong. He was, you know, clearing off his property, which I appreciate, because we don't have snakes and foxes like we had before he cleaned off out there, too. It's not that. It's just we, he's not changed the terrain of the land or anything, it's just there's not bushes and stuff there anymore to slow the water down. It's no big deal. I just wanted some silk fence put up or something, just to stop some of the water. It's, you know.
Can we do that?
You know what I'm saying.
Of the soil? The only thing that would probably solve that is if the owner of the property decide, agreed to re-terrace or reshape his property to, so that the water would drain in a different direction. But if there's no, if there's been no direct, um, disturbance of the soil, at this point, it's just, it's just a natural event. The rain fell, it fell at a high velocity, a high amount, and it affected your property, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, I'm just ask your neighbor to perhaps plant some grass or something.
That's fine, that's fine.
Because that's, what, what you've done is changed the C-value, which is coefficient runoff value of the property, by taking the trees down. So just some grass will.
There you go.
Most chance solve that problem right up.
Okay.
So I think that's easy to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, uh.
I think he's got a comment.
I'm sorry, the applicant?
Yeah, he wanted to say something. That's all right.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to say what I did was, uh, down the, uh, half of my property was within the floodplain off of the creek right there, so the hill that comes down where it meets the trees, uh, previous owner had bush hogged it not, not, uh, very regularly, so it had overgrown. We had probably like three, maybe four-inch diameter saplings and just underbrush rires and stuff that had got created there. So I bush hogged that. Now, I did take out a couple of pine trees in the front and some pine trees down there on the corner, uh, well away from the buffer off of the creek. Only other thing I know to do, we did get a lot of rain, as far as what she, what she was talking about that one day. I mean, in the last couple of months, I know, you know, y'all know, we've had six inches of rain within, you know, half a day, a lot, lot of rain. The only thing I, silk fence, you know, we know silk fence is gonna stop the silt. Eventually, it deteriorates and goes away, and it's really gonna be kind of unsightly. If I get into building some type of terrace or something, well, now I'm getting into the impervious buffer within the creek and disturbing land, creating mud and everything else. There definitely is down the road a plan to plant grass down there and stuff. Once this rezoning goes through, uh, I can bring in more buildings, I can start really working on that area down there, uh, to try to trap something that. You know, my first inclination was maybe, uh, setting some hay bales down there to maybe stop, but if we get a large volume water that came like that, it's just gonna blow the hay bales out, and, and then she's gonna have hay bales in her yard, too. So, uh, I think maybe just more, more or less monitoring it, and, uh, you know, if we get a problem of getting mud or something like that that was washing down, then I think we got an issue. But I think me and her can come up with something. When I did do that clearing, I actually left probably about a 10 or 20-foot strip of that underbrush between us, um, just for kind of what she was saying, a little bit of blockage of the water, but more so view, that way she didn't, you know, just kind of block in their view off a little bit of, of what I had done over there. I don't think it's gonna be a problem for me and her to figure something out, uh, of putting something, maybe something down there, hay bales or whatnot, in the meantime, but down the road, you know, one step at a time. I'll be getting all that stuff down there improved and grass planted and getting that section looking nice. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Chairman, just one thing. If, if the soil is bare in that area, planting, uh, planting grass or siding it, as Commissioner Prince stated, would help alleviate some of the velocity of the water, uh, in a significant rain event, but it, when it's a lot of water, it's, it's hard to, to slow it down when it, when it's significant at all of a sudden.
I think what we're faced with, it's, in a natural environment, whatever's there now is there, and if, if they start disturbing that, uh, to any degree, then we have rules and regulations that will make them address. Uh, as, as a matter of fact, a good rule of thumb is whatever's there now, hydraulically will, whether it's a 100-year rain or a 15-minute rain, I mean, it's something we have to live with. But if they start really improving it and changing it, then they have to have a hydraulical study, and then basically, they can put no more water on your land after all that development than it does now. So would that be a true statement? We, we do have rules that would address this in the event things change down the road. Yes.
Yes, sir.
I thought that would satisfy me. Uh, anybody else have any questions or comments? Not, we have a resolution approving the rezoning request, uh, by Real OG Property from O.I. Office Institutional C3 Highway Commercial for property located at 928 Highway 42 North and Land Lot 93 of the Seventh District, consisting of 2.599 acres.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve from District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? On our favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, next, uh, does somebody move? We approve the minutes for the May 13, 2015 meeting.
So move.
Have a motion, District One. Second District Four, any further discussion? On our favor, raise your right hand. Next, the chairman has no comments, and any commissioner would like to make a comment this time for any reason? Haven't said none. County manager comments? Madam Chair?
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm not sure how many of you all are aware tonight, or are aware, um, but the service delivery strategy extension for police services expires tonight with the city of Stockbridge, and staff has been working internally. city of Stockbridge, and staff has been working internally to try to see if we can get that resolved, and we are still not at a point of coming up with a figure that will make both parties happy, um, so I need some direction from this, from the commissioners on how you all would like for staff to proceed. We're more than willing, willing to continue working with the city and to see, to see if we can come up with a definitive number, but I need to provide some guidance to the officers, um, tonight in terms of the police services for the city of Stockbridge, um, so just looking for some direction from the board on that.
Okay, we'll give that some thought, and we'll be tagging base with Patrick, because I think Patrick's been dealing with DCA on this.
Well, I've, I mean, as far as the agreement goes, I've been relying on Sherri and her staff to work through the numbers. I mean, we're at a, we're at a point, we extended the agreement two months ago through tonight, and I've got, and I've got nowhere to go as far as negotiating without firm numbers from, on our end, to compare with the numbers presented by the city, and arguably as well, after midnight tonight, with that, in the absence of an agreement, the county police department has very limited jurisdiction within the city limits, so it, it would be, it's a, and I think Sherri said it as well as we can say it, but the board's got to tell us, what do you want your county police department to do within the city?
Extend it?
We could extend it, and we could get the city to vote on it at their next meeting.
What, what date could we extend it to?
You, you extend it to any day you want, there's no...
I know, but what would be?
Sherri?
If we, if it's the wishes of the board, if we could extend it to the first meeting in July, which would be July 7th, I believe.
That's just the police only, right? And that's the meet to make the DA happy?
That's right, just, just the police.
Is that correct?
They, they have made us a proposal, and we are, um, we have provided them with some numbers that were generated, and I don't know how they were generated, or where they were generated from, to be honest with you, um, but we're trying to get better backup to those numbers to sit down with them with some better detail. They've worked with us, I mean, they've not been uncooperative or unresponsive, I think what's happened is Sherri and her counterpart of the city have started a dialogue that frankly is going to be more productive, I think, than the rest of us having that communication. They're the, they're the kind of feet on the ground people that are probably going to make more progress.
Anybody have a problem if we amend the agenda to extend the police Stockbridge agreement to July the 2nd?
July 7th.
7th, July 7th.
That's what?
7th.
7th.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if not, does somebody move, uh, amend the agenda to consider extending the police, city of Stockbridge Police Hunter County Agreement until midnight, July the 7th?
I, I will say this, Mr. Chairman, before a motion's made, I've not received any communication, I don't know if Ms. Matthew has from anybody at the city asking us to do this, I don't know if they have a plan in place, or they don't have a plan in place, the last conversation I had with anybody at the city, um, I told them kind of where we were, which was, we've, we're kind of at a point where it doesn't look like it's getting anywhere.
A letter from Betty Welch, giving figures, and I think he was waiting on the county to give him something.
Well, we've, we've given them figures as well, but we're looking to see if we can firm up and fill in gaps between our figures, I mean, those, our figures are drastically different, and, and on our end, we're taking the initiative to see if we can't figure out where that gap, how that gap has created itself, because there's clearly a gap, and there's got to be an answer. I don't do the numbers, I don't know how to get there.
So you're saying really, in reality, July the 7th, is, is, we're going to be in the same position that we are now, basically?
Wouldn't surprise me if we are.
Yes.
And if we, unless, we make, I mean, we're going to lose two days probably for the 4th of July, and then even days that you're not closed or not here, most of the people that you probably need to discuss these are going to be on vacation or off of vacation, and I don't know that July 7th is feasible, if we're going to extend it, if we're not going to extend it, then there's, we don't need to have the discussion.
Bruce Holmes and I, Commissioner Holmes and I, the district, um, you know, some, some numbers were proposed to us, and, uh, I, I did not agree with the numbers in any which way, um, and we were also told that the sheriff had made a proposal to the city as well, and I, I believe I did send word through Patrick and Sherri that we were not going to extend this contract, that they needed to be prepared to do their contingency plan, and I have not heard any word from the city, if they have prepared for 12 o'clock tonight, when they will have no police, or not, so I, but I don't see this ending, I mean, we, we keep extending, we're getting these numbers that, frankly, I just don't agree with, um, and I, I don't know if we're going to come to a resolution. So, Commissioner Holmes, where, where?
When they, I mean, we've been doing this for...
Six months?
Seven months, um, and I'm tired of going back and forth, and I'm not going to support it this evening. If they decide to come with a serious proposal, I wouldn't mind coming back on a special call meeting, but, um, I don't, I'm not supporting extending the agreement.
The, I mean, there, there are constituents as well, I mean, they're not just city constituents, there are constituents, but at some point, um, the dialogue has to, I don't know, there, we have to come to a table and sit down and talk, and, and there's no discussion with the mayor or city council, it's only their representative, and, uh, I, I hope that the city has their contingency plan, as, did you discuss with the county, city manager that we would be not be extending this contract?
Um, I spoke with Mr. Harris this afternoon, we had a meeting in reference to something else, and then we met briefly about this, and I indicated to him at that time what had been expressed to me through you. He, in our conversation, it was my understanding that we could come to some resolution, and he felt comfortable in that, but felt that we needed to discuss it, and maybe take the attorneys out of it, and allow staff the opportunity to do that, um, which is why I brought it up this evening. I, I don't think staff has any issues with sitting down with the city administrator, um, but I think it's just a matter of numbers, and our numbers are, are vastly off, um, in terms of what, what we've been provided versus what their city attorney has provided. Again, over the last couple of weeks, I've tried to reach out to individuals that are, I call them SDS czars, to get some information and some guidance in terms of, tell me how to come up with this formula, because I think it's a million and one ways that we could come up with a magic number. Um, I do believe Chief Nichols, um, worked with the previous administration on coming up with the number that you currently have, and it's my understanding that the chief looked at the percentage of calls that he receives for the city of Stockbridge, he took that percentage, which I think is about 15.3 or 15.4 percent, and he just took that percentage and calculated that amount out of his overall budget, and that's how he came up with this number. Um, I think the city of Stockbridge has a difference in opinion, um, and I guess I don't need to go into details on that, because I think all the board members have been privileged to that information. I would just ask, um, the board to, to allow staff some additional time, um, so that we can at least try to continue offering services to the citizens of the city of Stockbridge. Certainly understand your concerns, certainly understand that it has taken some time, um, but I will tell you, most of the time with our SDS, it's not a quick process, and I think there's been conversations for years in terms of the services and the police services, and this is just something that you all have inherited, but it's been a problem, every year we get to this point, and we're still at the same situation, so I, again, like I mentioned to you earlier last week, I don't feel comfortable with the numbers being that vastly apart, and again, I don't think that Patrick and I can run the numbers and give you all the answer that you want without tapping into someone who's an expert in this, in, in this subject matter. Um, again, if, if staff needs to take the fall for it, I'll take the fall that we have not gotten to that point, but again, I'm not comfortable with the numbers, and I don't want to risk not providing service, because we still don't have an answer for you all.
I will yield the floor to District Three.
Yeah, I, I feel real uncomfortable with us not doing some type of extension, because the residents in Stockbridge is the one that suffer, uh, we, you know, things are going to go on for us, but I think we've got to give them some kind of deadline, that, hey, you know, we got to sit down at the table, and Blake, I know you've worked on this, I, I understand that, but I think we've got to at least go out again, because those residents up there are the ones going to suffer, and, and, and they're going to look at us, because we're the ones providing the service now, I think we need to bring this to a head, but I feel real uncomfortable with us just cutting them off and then not having any police service up there, I can't do that.
We're not just cutting them off, this, we've told them that we weren't going to extend this for months, I mean, it, it's not like we just decided to do this tonight.
Chair, can you explain what happened, after 12 o'clock, would the sheriff department just start taking over services in, in the city of Stockbridge? Or Patrick?
I'll defer to Patrick.
Uh, it is, it is my initial opinion that the sheriff's department and the police department can both respond to calls, there's no law that says they can't respond to calls, the problem becomes of the, sort of the routine law enforcement issues. I can tell you, the district attorney and the solicitor general both called me several months ago, and expressed concerns about things like evidence gathering, and, and executing warrants and search warrants, and conducting search warrants, and even with making some arrests. Uh, the, the first knee jerk reaction everybody has was, well, the sheriff can do it, well, number one, I don't think the sheriff's equipped to do it, I don't think he's prepared, uh, he doesn't have patrols and, and all of, I mean, he may have some limited patrol, but he has, doesn't have the patrol capacity to go in there, I don't think they've gone to him about stepping in, I don't know if they have, I, I haven't heard about it, um, and even if they did, there is a statute that seems to suggest that they have to have a written agreement with the sheriff, and this board has to approve that written agreement, and that's, we've not been presented with any written agreement to present to this board with the sheriff, so, honest to goodness, I'm, I'm a little unsure what the sheriff can even do, I think anybody can respond to calls, I think any of our police officers can respond to calls, and I think the sheriff's department could respond to them, and I think our police department can respond to them, the question is whether we can make effective criminal cases, and I don't, I have never prosecuted a real crime in my life, I don't know how they do that, um, but it would be, it would be an absolute shame to see this negotiation end tonight and leave people with the prospect, because it's not just the mayor and council that might suffer, it's people that don't have a say in this that might suffer. I would suggest, as, as much work has been done at the commissioner level, consultant level, or anybody else, that the one place that the real work hasn't been done yet is, is at this staff level, and I would suggest that it might be appropriate to give this staff an opportunity to try to make it happen, working with their staff, and that's, you know, the truth of it is, that's where things normally get done in government, but, um, you know, I...
I want to the next meeting, but after that, I'm not supporting it at all.
Yeah, I mean, we've told them multiple times to get with us or figure out a plan, or, and it, and it just doesn't end, again, we've been presented with a proposal, like great, I don't see where the numbers are coming from, um, you know, again, I do plan, and just so we're all on the same page, um, on preparing a proposal, presenting it to the city of Stockbridge, and it is non-negotiable, um, I'm tired of going back and forth, um, it costs so much to police in the city of Stockbridge, and I love the city, my business is in the city, I love the residents, I grew up there, went to high school there, and I'm, I'm sorry to bring the citizens into this, but at some point, you know, I have citizens that are in Locust Grove, who are paying for police officers that don't leave the city of Stockbridge, we've got to come to some kind of agreement, and I, again, I, I, we've told them this was coming, I know, I think Patrick has even mentioned to their representative that we're not going to extend this, but again, I, I can't put our officers in danger, which it would, and I cannot put the citizens in danger, which it would, but I am not happy right now, and I, I'll go to the next meeting, and I'm, I'm not happy at that, I'm doing that very hesitantly, but I'm going to do that for our police department and for our citizens, Commissioner Holmes and ours, but, um, that's it, we, we're going to have to either, they're going to have to either do their own thing and help, start their own police department, or get the sheriff in there, if we can't come to an agreement.
I would advise them to start working on that during the next two weeks, if, um, we can't come to any resolution in the next couple of days, because I can't support it after the next meeting.
Go ahead.
I think if we don't do this, we need to, uh, instruct Patrick to give them written notice, uh, what, what the deal is, and if they don't get with us, at least they've been notified, they can't say, well, they didn't even tell us, they just did away with it, so.
I think that's a perfect idea, I don't have a proposal to give them, as soon as I'm given a proposal to give them, we can give it to them, but I don't know, I, I don't, I'm not your operations people, I'm just your lawyer, I'm limited in what I can do, so, if someone gives me a proposal to make, I will make it, and, um, you know, hopefully it'll work its way to a conclusion.
You think you'd have all this put together by July the 7th at midnight, would that be appropriate?
I, if I'm given, if you give me something to propose to them tomorrow, I could have it to them that day, I mean, I, the...
It's firm, as far as I'm concerned.
We can come up with a firm proposal, I mean, we were trying to have someone else from the outside look in, because we're, we're, the numbers are different, just to explain to our constituents, the city is proposing that they're paying us much more in tax revenue than what the county views as being paid in tax revenue, and so we're having some issues of how much is being paid, and then how much is owed, and different kind of things, so that's where the numbers are shaking down, um, and there are quite a bit of difference, quite a bit of difference, so, um, we can prepare a proposal, I, I really would like an expert to look at this, but, I mean, we can prepare a proposal and present it to them, and then it's, it balls in their court at that point, but I, I will advise the mayor and city council, who will not speak to me about this, to, um, prepare to, for a contingency, just in case that we're not able to come to an agreement.
Tonight, in one way or another, to keep, to keep the ball rolling?
I will motion to extend the agreement until next meeting, um, and allow staff to negotiate with, um, the, um, city manager and council and mayor.
Have a motion on the floor?
I reluctantly second that motion.
Any further discussion? Unless somebody has an alternate plan, I, this, this plan is better than nothing, and we have to move in that direction, so, uh, having said that, uh, any further discussion? If not, uh, everybody favor the motion, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move, so we have given instructions. Uh, you have anything else, Madam?
No, sir, I do not.
Patrick, you have anything or a comment?
I have one thing, um, I think Stephanie, the, the county clerk, needs some guidance on, back, uh, a little over a week ago, about a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks ago, she sent out some emails, trying to schedule a meeting to price the bonds for the refinance or refunding of what we've all referred to as the cotton fields debt, the, the date originally proposed to do it was July 7th, the date we've already been talking about, that's a 9:00 AM meeting, the bond, um, underwriters have told us we don't want to price a bond on the morning after a holiday weekend, because that'll be the first day after the holiday weekend, and that's a bad idea, they suggested it moving it a day or two back, uh, they suggested moving it that night to the end of the day, even though they didn't really want to do that, the last suggestion I saw was, uh, June, I'm sorry, July 9th, to do a called meeting on July 9th, um, that is, that would allow us to get it done quickly and, and avoid the risk of rising interest rates, and it would allow us to get a little separation from the holiday weekend, that would allow us to better price those bonds, so we need some direction on the board about what you want us to do. The last emails, the last responses I saw from board members, and I may not have gotten them all, was a suggestion to do it July 21st at the regular meeting, and I think, uh... to do it July 21st at the regular meeting, and I think, uh, the concern on the bond end was that's really taking a risk on all of our timing and on the insurance or on the interest rates. So, we're just looking for some guidance to give staff and-
That would be the... the day after. Would that work? That'd be on a Wednesday.
What's your preference?
Okay.
Evening of the eighth.
How about six o'clock on the, uh, July the 8th? Would that work?
Uh, we will circulate... we'll... we'll circulate that... that to all the other players and make sure, but the last conversation we had, they were pretty willing to come whenever. So-
Well, I'm saying, if we got a quorum here, I'll just go ahead and declare we have a meeting at six o'clock on the 8th for that purpose. Now, who's the other players involved in it? Other than the board and finance?
We'll find out. We'll just find out. What we'll do is we'll find out. If that doesn't work, Mr. Chairman, we may have to come to you and-
Okay, well, let's do this.
Get another day.
Uh, let's tentatively do that, and if... if... if everybody can be there, then I'll confirm it. If not, find out what their schedule is, and we... we'll... I'll just call a meeting for that. Does that work for everybody?
We'll find out.
If it's anything other than that, everybody have to look at the schedule of the board and figure out what would work for them. So, we're kinda back in that same scenario. Well, let's do that. Let's shoot for six o'clock on the 8th, and if all players can participate, uh, the board can let us know tomorrow. Look at their schedule, private schedules, and let us know and see how that would work out. Does that sound like a plan?
Already done.
Okay. You got anything else?
No, sir.
Uh, upcoming meetings, we got Tuesday, July the 7th at 9:00 AM is a regular meeting. Tuesday, July the 24th, 6:30 is a regular meeting. Uh, I'm told we need to go into executive session for potential litigation. Is that correct?
Litigation and real estate acquisition.
Real estate, okay. Does somebody move that we adjourned executive session?
And I've been told, Mr. Chairman, I've just been told personnel.
Sir?
I've just been told personnel as well.
Personnel only?
Personnel, real estate, and threatened litigation.
I got you. Okay. We got acquisition of real estate pending, or potential litigation, personnel matters. Somebody move in that direction.
So, move.
We have a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Have a second district for any further discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay.